Bonjour, bonjour à tout le monde donc on va appeler la réunion alors.
Good afternoon everyone, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Yes, thank you, we do have an agenda for your approval. Would somebody like to move the adoption of the agenda? A move and second councillor Richard and councillor Kingston. Any questions? If none.
C'est beau, merci, unanimous.
Great, thank you. July twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting.
Merci madame Lagrefia, could I have a mover and a second or for the minutes please? Conseil Kingston, conseil Léger, donc question.
Any questions?
Verbally, donc on lève la main, c'est beau, merci, merci tout le monde.
Thank you everyone. It's carried, madame clerk. Are there any conflicts? No, none, thank you, madame clerk. New business, the first one is an update from the Southeast Regional Services Commission from Roland Le Blanc. Good afternoon Roland and welcome. Yeah, I'll give you the floor, just press your button please.
He may turn it on and off.
Oh, turn it on. Wait. Now you can hear me? Okay, great, good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity to give you an update on where, what we're doing at the Southeast RSC.
There's a lot of work happening, there's a lot of projects that we're working on. Our directors can speak for hours and hours and I think our, our mayors and our administrators know there's a lot of stuff going on. But I'm gonna give you a brief update on, on what's going on and, and what's being done. And I'd like to start off by inviting you to our all council session on September twenty seventh. So every year, this is our third year, I do believe, that we invite all the mayors and councillors from the region for a working session. So we can tell you what's been going on and get your advice on what you'd like to see. So it's September twenty seventh, Saturday I believe, on ten AM till probably three at the Avenir Center. So certainly invite you to come, visit us and tell us what you think and what you'd like to see coming years. So as far as the agenda, I'm gonna look at who we are, what we've done since twenty twenty three. And what's coming up in twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Talk about some of our guiding principles. And then we'll give you an update on all of the services. And then we'll have a discussion, see if you guys have got any ideas or if you wanna come to our all council session and provide some more input on what you think we should be doing for the region. So as far as who we are, well, we're the Southeast Regional Service Commission. We represent the twelve municipalities in one rural district of the region. We represent about twenty-five percent of New Brunswick's population. And I think we all know we're the economic engine of New Brunswick. So we are a very important partner for the province to, to see that it works well. We do have thirty percent of New Brunswick's tax base. And in twenty twenty three, we had fifty percent of all building permits in New Brunswick. And it was another record year in building permits in twenty twenty four. We're also experiencing large population group, uh, growth and we're the hub of the Maritimes. So who we are, again, we're a very complex region compared to the, some of the other regional service commissions. And we always say that if there was one regional service commission that shouldn't work, it would be ours. But for some reason, all of the members get around the table, put their regional hats on and wanted to work together. Because we've got huge urban rural populations, we've got Anglophone, Francophone municipalities. We have two health networks, we have four tourism associations and five chambers of commerce. And really what we've seen is that I think our biggest role can be to bring all of these together to work better together as a region. And we're fortunate to have a board comprised of mayors, mayors who understand the benefits of regional collaboration. So just a quick picture here on the twelve regional service commissions. You see that ours represents thirty percent of the tax base, twenty-five percent of the population. The three big ones, Fredericton or the capital region, Fundy and ourselves represent sixty-eight percent of the tax base and sixty percent of the provincial population. As far as our regional service commission, Moncton represents forty-six percent of the total tax base and forty-two percent of the total population. Moncton, the Up River View make up seventy-two percent of the tax base and sixty-seven percent of the population. So what we have done since twenty twenty three, I think we've certainly. Stakeholder engagement has been very important to us. We have working sessions with our administrators, we have working sessions with our board. We have this all council session where again, it's a working session of us telling or giving an update on what we're doing and getting advice on what we should be doing. So September twenty seventh, I think we'll look at again, the budget for this year, but we also wanna talk about the budget for future years. It's really exciting to be able to plan what we'd like to see in three years. Where would you like to see, be at in five years? So giving us those goals and objectives, I think is really important and it's at these sessions. We also have an all municipal staff session where we invite all of the senior staff from each municipality to come around tables and talk to us about what they'd like to see. So I think the administrators, the staff, the board have a good appreciation of what's going on in their municipalities and some of the issues that hopefully we can help address. One of the key things was keeping costs to our municipal partners as low as possible. This is also the same plan that we've got for twenty twenty six because I think our municipal partners are finding it difficult with the tax assessment freeze and other economic issues. And I think for us, it's about bringing people together. It's really about bringing people together who hadn't met and I think the best example of that is in the beginning of the reform, we brought the transportation committee together. There's people from Kodiak Transit, Urban Rural Rides, Maritime Bus, and we brought all of the players together. We got around the table talking about, well, what's your biggest issue as an organization? And then one of them said, well, this is my biggest issue. And the next one next to them said, well, that's what we do. Which was sort of a goosebump moment for all of us to say that, look, we can do, we can help the region work better together. These groups had not met together before. So bringing these people together to work better, I think is a huge potential opportunity for us. So what are we working on for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six? The regional trail network, I'm hoping that you've heard of it. If not, we can certainly give you a presentation that could be a huge asset for the region that we've been working on. Trail essentially going from Alma to Riverview to Moncton, Dieppe, all the way to Port Algen, Strait Shores. Real destination that we're hoping this could be something exciting for the region that could bring people for more than one or two days, but could bring them here for weeks. So huge project that we've been working on, we do have some progress, we'll talk to you about it. Regional transportation system. So we're looking at how we can provide better transportation systems for the entire region. Working on a regional plan and I'll talk to you a bit about that with the three planning organizations from Plan Three Sixty, the Planning Division of the city of Moncton and Dieppe, working together. Certainly increased communications, we know that's been sort of lacking in, for, for a specific purpose. That we didn't wanna oversign the municipalities, but now it's time that we need to increase communications. Working on an ass mapping survey that I'll talk to you about here shortly. Continued training for not pro, non, nonprofits, tourism brand value and continuing the engagement with our CAOs, the municipal councils and the business committee. How come I'm going the wrong way here? Other important project that the city of Moncton has asked for and other municipalities is recycling and composting for apartments. So that on our Eco Three Sixty side, we've been working, hoping to, to get to deliver that. But we were waiting for the province to get their extended producer responsibility program for packaging and printed paper, which represents about eighty percent of what we recycle. So they now have the legislation, they now have the role to implement recycling for apartments. So that should be coming in the next year from Circular Materials. We've been working on a regional waste collection program, some municipalities have opted in, some have not. But it's, it's working very well doing collection as a region instead of each individually. Working on a landfill gas to renewable gas project. Infrastructure cost sharing and I'll be going through these again, so I won't take too much time. Public Safety Days, a state of the region, which is planned for November twenty first, where we wanna bring business leaders for the entire region to celebrate the success of our region. And it's about bringing people together. So the guiding principles from the beginning, the, the mayors around the table, the administrators thought it was important that we develop some guiding principles so that when we make decisions, it takes into account all of these guiding principles. So we looked at as a once in a generation type opportunity. Some of the other RSCs seen it like a, a, a big, big conflict. We said, well, no, let's get going, let's work better as a region if we can, let's keep the costs as low as possible. And let's focus on we as a region can help make things better for our residents. We need to do this together, we all benefit. We need everyone on board, we all know that it doesn't take many on an organization or a group for it to go sideways. And we've seen that at other regions of the province where they don't wanna work together and they don't get the success that others who do do. Need to be mindful of our urban and rural reality, we need to build on our region successes. So we didn't wanna break, break down anything that was working well. We're not another level of government, so we don't have the option to raise taxes. We're essentially a collaboration of our municipal partners. Need to set realistic goals, wanna look at continuous improvement. So we are still a relatively new organization with these new reforms. Some of them have jumped into the, jumped the gun and, and did some projects that they sort of regretted later on. We've been trying to stay slow and steady and continuously improve and provide better services. Finding solutions, looking for win-win-wins. Want to avoid duplication, I think that was a big one. We wanted to make sure that we weren't doing things that our municipal partners were already doing. What are those gaps? Where is that sweet spot where we can be to find some good solutions? We're looking for the best value for the taxpayer and we wanna treat everyone with respect and what is best for the entire region. So we're a collaboration of municipal partners, we're municipalities working together better. Looking at the future, data driven is very important. We've been spending a lot of time here in the last year or so, getting data, make some good decisions. Apolitical, all about bringing people together, stay positive and constructive and we're a work in progress. So this last comment here, I think is the most important is that will be a reflection of the collaboration of our municipal partners. If our municipal partners don't wanna get along, we're not gonna move. If we all wanna work together for the, the better of the, our taxpayers and our residents, I think the sky's the limit. So if we look at our twenty twenty five budget, we're working on the twenty twenty six budget now. But just a summary of where we were for twenty twenty five, we're looking at forty-four point five million dollars in budget. The member contributions, which was the member from, the contributions from our municipal partners, which included Eco Three Sixty and Planning and the new reform was eight point one million. And the RSSF fund, which is the funds by the province, was four point four million dollars. So if we look at the new reform services, we look at the budget, went from one point five million in twenty twenty three, four point four million and seven point two million in twenty twenty five. But we've been trying to keep our member contributions as low as possible. So we've gone from five hundred and seventy-three thousand in twenty twenty four to four hundred and fifty-one thousand in twenty twenty five. And I can tell you that in the budget, we're looking at maintaining that or reducing that as much as possible. I see a question potentially. Councilor, oh, okay, that's it. So that's a twenty-one point two percent reduction. So if we look at solid waste, you probably know what's going on a bit more on that one. It's one more, one of those services that is really in the, the daily habits of everyone. So the twenty twenty five budget just for solid waste was twenty-two point seven million. Member contributions were three million and Moncton's contribution was one point two million. Reduction in fees, again, we've been working hard at reducing the fees to our members. And we did a reduction in the two thousand nineteen of four point six eight percent, one of eight point two percent in twenty twenty one. And a twenty-one point four three reduction in twenty twenty five mainly because of the PPP program. So what's happening in Eco Three Sixty, we're seeing an increase in use of our site because of the growth in the population. So I think we've seen that visitors are up by twenty percent over the last five years. Divergent KPIs are generally up and we've got some major capital projects that we're working on. Compost plant upgrade, double cell construction and, and some office. And we're also working on landfill gas utilization, which we're really excited to be able to announce that we've done a carbon footprint reduction by a hundred and twenty-two percent just last year. That's amazing for the environment. So if we look at the breakdown of the solid waste budget, oh, sorry, some of the, the priorities. We're really looking at implementing the waste sorting for multi-residential units. So the recycling program will be done by the EPR PPP contractors, Circular Materials, but we'll have to look after organic waste, so that's something we're working on. And we need to continue talks with Circular Materials as far as negotiations on the services we provide them. So here's the breakdown of the financing. Out of the twenty-two point seven million, three point two millions comes from our municipal members. A ten point three million comes from our ICI, the industrial, commercial and institutional sector, so the private industry. Other RSCs, Kent, Kings and Chardot, give us four mil, four million in funding. EPR, the PPP program gives us three point three million and others of nine hundred and ninety-three. We also had the second year surplus that jumped in there. So again, I think the ICI portion is a huge factor in what we do. Regional Collaboration Services, so these are two projects that we as a region have decided to, to work on. The first one is the Regional Land Use Plan and the Regional Trail Network. So and we can see that the budget's gone from two hundred and fifty-five to two sixty-one to four point one million. And the four point one million is really a, the project on the regional trail, the investments to get us from Moncton to Cityac. So on the Regional Land Use Plan, again, that is a coordination by the three planning groups in our region, so Moncton, Dieppe and Plan Three Sixty. Very nice to see them all working together to develop some guidelines for the entire region. So we have some symmetry of the work along. So this study will be completed by March twenty twenty six and it'll be under budget. As far as the priorities, we'll be transferring some amounts to twenty twenty six to complete one final study. The Regional Trail Network, which I spoke to you a few minutes ago. We've got some month funding from RDC, which can be stacked with RSSF. We began the branding and naming exercises, I'm sure you'll be consulted with. So the twenty twenty six priorities, what we're hoping to get complete is a complete construction between Moncton and Cityac. So people would be able to take their bikes and head all the way to Plant de Chen. Similarly is what my parents used to do on the train, well, hopefully they can do it by bicycle or by other means and take a bike ride and come back and so on, so. And we were hoping to begin a fundraiser, fundraising campaign for that project.
Donc, si nous regardons au transport régional maintenant.
Now, if we look at regional transportation, this, we work very hard, we have studies underway. We have committee makes, made up of all of the major stakeholders in the field. Kodiak Transpo is a member of it, Urban Rural Rides, Maritime Bus. What are the other ones? Well, all of the experts in regional transportation sit together around the table to come up with great solutions to try and improve regional transportation. The budget was a hundred and eighty thousand in twenty twenty three and it goes, is now almost one point seven million. The main reason for this increase is that we have a fun, federal funding program that allowed us to purchase infrastructure, which I think the federal amount was one million. So now in terms of the goal statement, we want to increase transportation accessibility, affordability and availability to support residents and regional visitors across the region. Now, how can we do more and better? How can we better offer regional transportation to our residents? We've worked with UNB and Dr. Trevor Hansen, who assisted us and to look at different options. We hired nationally recognized consultants and they determined the, what the best practices are across Canada and to see how we can do better in terms of regional transportation. Here in Moncton and Riverview, you have a re, do, we do have a service already, can we improve it? Can we enhance it to offer better service? So we're continuing to work on governance. We conducted a study that gave us options to offer regional transportation services. But now we have to determine what we want to do and what we'd like to do. And so this governance study is very important. In twenty twenty six, we are going to give out the information on all of these studies that have been conducted and it'll be the time to make decisions. Now, we have Angela Allain from Kodiak Transit as one of the experts on the committee. We have Radia Rifat and Leslie Teck continue to be involved in the discussions as well. Now, if we look at tourism as well, the, we have a committee made up of all of the tourism organizations in the region, Destination Dieppe, Southeast and the tourist organizations from Fundy Albert. We try to bring everybody together to improve collaboration, to see how we can help each other. We've had great discussions and we, the budget went from ninety-eight thousand in twenty twenty three to three hundred and seven thousand in twenty twenty four, three hundred and thirty-four thousand in twenty twenty five. Moncton's contribution for this new service is twenty-four thousand dollars a year. They did a lot in regional tourism, they law, they have a whole calendar that they launched with regional tourism events, they completed the regional tourism brand value pop, proposition. They've developed a website, they are developing a website and they're, they're working with Geoportal, which is another great regional IT project. They've created attractions in Southeast New Brunswick to see how we can improve tourism here. In twenty twenty six, we're hoping to implement the regional tourism opportunity development with a good analysis and strategy considering this new provincial tourism strategy. Gillian Summers sits on this regional tourism committee from Destination Moncton, Dieppe. I, we use Chad Gaudreau and Colette McLaughlin as well as SMEs and they continue to be involved and provide valuable feedback.
Recreation and cultural infrastructure. So this is more legislated, the committee is legislated by the province and it has a creation of a committee which includes mayor, some of our mayors, administrators and stakeholders throughout the region to try to make better decisions on infrastructure for the entire region. So instead of everybody looking for one type of infrastructure, what do we really need? So they've worked hard at creating a framework, getting the data on, okay, what is the infrastructure we have in place? And what do we need for infrastructure as a region? And hopefully we can resolve most of the issues that could come up in the next couple of years. So the big thing was to create a framework that we can do some decision making as a region. So the budget's gone from seventy-four thousand to three hundred and forty-six, down to one seventy-nine. And we probably expect that this might go down a year after year, depending on what projects come up to do some cost sharing. So Moncton's contribution in twenty twenty five is twenty-two thousand. So they've done the final review of phase one, which was the Southeast Regional Needs Assessment. They're now working on the draft report for phase two, collaboration framework. And we've got ongoing dialogue with our communities and partners on the regional alignment on possible projects based on the regional needs assessment. So bottom line for twenty twenty six, it's going to be implementing this framework. Monica Tucker has been one of our subject matter experts on this committee. And we've got involvement from all of the other communities too at the same time. So we continue to talk about this at the administrator's level, at the board level and at the stakeholder level. Regional community and social development. So this was one new service that started in twenty twenty four. It was a year later than the other reform and the province really hasn't given us the mandate for this service. However, our board decided they wanted to move forward. They wanted to find out what we can do as a region to help on some of these social issues that are in the region. So if you look at our budget, it's gone from four hundred and sixty to nine hundred and eight to one point two million. ESIC, the Economic, Social and Inclusion Corporation, provides a portion of that funding for one employee and some sponsorship on some, certain projects. So on this one, Moncton's contribution is eighty-eight thousand. Some of the goals that our board sort of wanted us to do because again, there's nothing really from the province, except we know that as a region, we can bring people together. So that is our biggest strength, getting people to work better together. So some of the goals serve as a regional forum to unite partners and leverage shared resources. Identify gaps for nonprofit organizations and provide data to strengthen planning and connections. Enhance social development through stronger collaboration among governments, nonprofits and communities. Build nonprofit capacity while supporting RSC members' community efforts. Lead scalable projects to reduce poverty, housing challenges and economic precarity. Align with but not duplicate provincial responsibilities. That's always been a concern for us and some of our members. They didn't want us to do some of the provinces' responsibilities. So we try to find where is that gap, where is that sweet spot that we can help our municipal partners? And address social challenges regionally to ease pressures on municipalities, improve outcomes for vulnerable populations and build residente communities. So this is one of those services which I think, I know the city is very interested in. And I think we need to find what is that sweet spot where we can help on projects. I think that workshop on September twenty seventh would be a perfect opportunity to come talk with our other municipal partners. Because I think that's important on how we decide how to move forward. So some of the accomplishments, well, they've, they've been working on an organizational study of all nonprofits in the region. We thought there was three hundred, I think, we now think there's about four hundred. And their meeting, their goal is to meet as many of them by the end of the year. Up to date, I think forty point three percent of all of those who answered surveys were from the city of Moncton. We've done some capacity building sessions, so some training courses, educational courses for nonprofits on governance, budgeting, how to apply for, for funds. Again, trying to help them to do better with what they do. We've got a grants database where we find six, found six hundred and sixteen opportunities. And again, I think that we've done twenty-eight lists to nonprofits and fifty-three percent went to Moncton nonprofits. And we've done this, uh, uh, And we've done this, these community parks. So this is just play boxes for kids to help them keep busy and energy use their energy with these play boxes and one one's going to Moncton this year. So some of the two thousand and twenty-five and twenty-six priorities, they're going to continue their capacity building sessions, trying to help our nonprofits do better. We're looking at a community sector forum, which is planned to be in Moncton, where we can bring all of those organizations to talk together, having some working sessions so they can do better together. Regional action planning for facility activity, that's really in the community development side of things. Continued collaboration with nonprofits and then other other projects that we can work on for our municipal partners. Economic development, Francesco Calazo is here, our director of economic development. He'll be providing the next presentation. But this, of course, this group is a continuation of sort of what the former Economic Development Group used to do, except it's now doing it for the region. And historically, our Moncton Dieppe Riverview would be paying, I think it's about seven hundred thousand dollars a year. Now it's not costing anything, so Moncton's saving about four hundred thousand dollars there. So there's no contribution for our members at this one, because we can find the funding from our RSSF funds and the working New Brunswick funds. So our budget's gone from seven hundred thousand to two point four million to three point six million for two thousand and twenty-five. So what are they doing? Well, their role is really to provide strategic focus for regional economic growth. We want to support investment readiness, foster foster a healthy business community, really align workforce development and labor force. So that's working with the Southeast Labor Market Partnership. Obtain advice and feedback from business leaders on direction of the RSC. Gathering relevant data and coordinate regional issues for attraction, resettlement, and retention of new immigration with the LIP. So some of the accomplishments that they've estimated of the benefit for the region. We look at a total regional economic impact benefit of four point six million. I think that's for two thousand and twenty-four. And we look at the IDA Center, which has helped eighteen new businesses be created. Connector Program, better jobs for twenty-one connectees. And entrepreneurship services where they provide business education to little businesses, direct impact of point nine million. Huge benefit here, and I think Francesco would love to invite you to the OECD Conference, October second and third of this year. Huge conference for the region. International experts from all over the world will be coming to Moncton for this event. And we'd love to see you there for this very important discussion. And then we continue to collaborate internationally. So some of the priorities for economic development, including the LIP, which is being transferred from the city to the region, which adds to staff. Regional economic development strategy is very important. That's a strategy being put together by Francesco and a and a group of economic stakeholders throughout the region to try to get the framework together for how best to work with economic development as a region. So we're still new in this field. How can we improve the collaboration amongst the economic development groups around the region? Advance existing and new programs to develop regional workforce by need, location, and sector. And I think that's the SLMP, the Southeast Labor Market Partnership, that's working hard on finding those sectors. So mosquito control, you may not know, but in two thousand and twenty, I think the cities of Moncton and Dieppe and the town of Riverview asked the Regional Service Commission to help them with mosquito control. So there was a an organization that sort of ran it for fifty years. And we took it over on two thousand and twenty-one, and we brought together some experts similar to what we're doing. I think it's a perfect example of communities working together. So if you look at the budget, we brought the budget down a bit. We've brought new services, new technologies that help reduce environmental impacts on mosquito control. We're using, we used to use argos, which was lots of fun, but created quite a bit of damage to our marshes. So now we use drones where we get a better spread and less less problems on the marshes. So it's their first full season, use the new drone technology. And two thousand and twenty-six, we're looking at the purchase of a smaller drone. Regional Waste Collection is another that I think eight or nine municipalities decided to embark on, where a number of municipalities are now doing the collection together, whereas they used to do it in smaller markets. And with economies of scale, they'll be saving money and reducing their workload. At two thousand and twenty-six, we hope to increase residential units, which means increased cost to municipalities, but may able to reduce some staff. So the service began in two thousand and twenty-four, but member paid a hundred percent of the costs with no overhead. So the summary of Moncton is, here's what I wanted to show you was that in two thousand and twenty-five, we've got one point nine seven million dollars being paid to the Regional Service Commission. Seventy-five point eight two of that though goes to Eco three sixty and mosquito control. Now, the regional collaboration, which includes the regional plan and trails, is about fourteen percent. So the remaining costs for the new services for the city of Moncton is one hundred and ninety-eight thousand. That represents about point twenty percent, twenty-one percent of your budget. And remember that Moncton no longer has to pay for regional economic development, which is a savings of about four hundred thousand. So we're in the process of the two thousand and twenty-six budget. Oh, there you go. So we're hoping that we've got some meetings this week to talk about the budget. I think the main objectives here was to keep the costs at the same level or lower for the same services. So we're trying to find ways to reduce costs, to reduce the impact on our municipal partners. So we'll be presenting a proposed budget in August, coming soon. We've got our all council session in September where we can talk about it. Our municipal partners have forty-five days to provide comments on the budget, and then we adopt the budget in October. So yeah, some of the the objectives, keep the costs as low as possible. Continue to maximize all fund stacking and work collaborative to provide better services for all residents. So I hope I gave you some information, some useful information on what's going on. We really hope you'll help us in developing where we want to be in the next two, three years or five years as a regional service commission. We are a collaboration of municipalities. You are our members. So we want to hopefully help find those gaps, find that sweet spot on where we can be as a regional service commission to offer better services to the residents of Southeast New Brunswick.
That's it for my presentation, so thank you very much for your attention and your time, and I'll be happy to take your questions. Thank you very much, Roland. Councilor Bourgeois. Thank you very much, your worship. Thank you for your presentation. That's very inspiring. I'd like to thank you also for the services and the expertise of Christine Allen, who sits on the Social Inclusion Committee. She is a real gem. I'll be out of the country on September twenty-seventh, so I won't be able to attend, but I'd like to ask you a few questions. First question. What about the provincial government? They froze municipal assessments. And those municipalities contribute to your budget. So what is the impact of this freeze of assessments on your operational budget? And will the city have to reduce or freeze their contribution to the commission? What's the impact? That's a very good question. We received a message from our municipal partners, some partners. Municipalities have various experiences. Some are struggling quite a bit and some others a bit less. Though it's it puts them in a difficult situation. But when we talk to our administrators and members of and board members, what we hear loud and clear is that we don't want to increase the fees. We want to keep the same level of service without increasing the fees. Because what happened over the first few years was designed to build the team, to conduct cert cert studies. So now we have to focus on specific issues as a region, so transportation systems, funding opportunities. So we are talking to the province to see what's achievable in this respect. What do we want to do as a region? So we have to sit around the table and discuss those issues. So for me, the main goal was to keep the status quo, maintain the status quo, to be able to provide a bit of support to our municipal partners that are struggling with this decision from the provincial government. So are you seeing any reduction in the level of services? No, thank you. Question number two, about cost sharing in terms of infrastructure and recreational, educational infrastructures and facilities. I have two questions in this respect. Are projects like the Avenir Center, that's already been open for five, six years? Because we're still funding this, but is the commission still looking at projects where the costs would be shared? So we are open to any kind of projects as for infrastructure that's being created. So if a municipality would like for a project to be considered a regional project, there has to be a decision-making process so that we can have a regional decision-making process to reach a consensus. So this hasn't proved easy in other regions. Decisions are hard to make. But we really have to sit around the table, work together to develop the right solution. So the structure is there, the decision-making structure is there. But if municipalities start to invest in regional projects, the decision-making structure needs to be adjusted accordingly, because they will want to have their say in those projects. So it's give and take. We need to change the governance of projects. But you haven't included existing projects, right? No. Sorry, I should have been more specific. You mentioned waste management, waste collection. And one of the issues that we raise sometimes at the city of Moncton is how can we better sort out waste with condo units and bigger residential buildings? Because people tend to throw all their waste in the same in the same bin. So is it something that the commission is looking at? Yes, we've been thinking about that for a while. We have an a broadened accountability project targeting the producers. So anything that's used to package products represents about seventy-five to eighty percent of waste. So those products are targeted by the legislation. So the industry is now accountable for collecting, sorting out, and recycling their products. So we did not want to make any changes and put additional pressures on residents and condos, knowing that there would be another partner. Things have changed quickly, and the industry would like to increase the quality of the way waste is sorted out. And this will be imposed by legislation for apartment buildings. Oh, is this going to be done one piece at a time? Yeah, so it's going to be done on a voluntary basis at first, and then we will push for bylaws to be passed to make it mandatory. I went to Saskatchewan not so long ago, and we realized that there was quite a lot of contamination in apartment buildings, and it's hard to do follow-up there. I'd like to make a few suggestions for you to consider in your discussions. Acadian Heritage from before the deportation, there's a lot of sites along the Petit Côte d'Iac River, because everything was burnt down, but and the second issue is bilingual bilingual signage. We are living in a bilingual region. In Riverview, there's more francophones that people might think. Is this an issue that could be on your table? So the nice thing about our commission is that anything can be on the table. Controlling mosquitoes. Three municipalities approached us to take care of that service. We also had an opportunity. We were asked to do a study of forest fires in the region. So the province had some funding available, but things were a bit tight for us, so it was not achievable. But it's examples of projects that we can do together, because we know that forest fires know have no borders. So it would be important to be able to work on projects like those. So I think Acadian Heritage is a perfect example of projects that we could work on together. Well, I mentioned the commercial signage, because it results in a few tensions. So maybe we could take into account the geographical geographic realities and linguistic realities. Maybe each municipality has their role to play, but we might need to do better at collaborating in this respect. Yes, we need to educate our people on accepting and promoting larger residential apartment buildings to accommodate our growth. And it's not something we're used to, so we need to focus on that. And the other points that you raised are also very valid points that need to be brought to the table. Thank you. Thank you for your very interesting presentation. Thank you, your worship. Councilor Kingston. Thank you, Councilor Bourgeois.
Couple of things jumped out, though, maybe an update on the regional trail network. You mentioned Moncton Shedyac is the remaining portion. That's the city of Moncton funding part of it. Can you update exactly what's missing or what components have been done on the regional trail network?
So when we'd have our working working weekend sessions with the board in two thousand and twenty-three, when we started them, we started talking about the regional trail to everyone. And the regional trail really came about when the opportunities for federal funding came, and then we wanted to do something good with that funding. In two thousand and twenty-three, we did a presentation on, I think it's two hundred and seventy kilometers of regional trail throughout the region. And in two thousand and twenty-four, the mayor said, well, okay, this is a beautiful project, but are we ever going to see this completed by our by the time we leave office? Or we so the big decision was, okay, develop a plan so that we can get this done in ten years. So the first five years is really what we used to call the Shoreline Trail, which would go from Alma to Riverview to Dieppe to Shedyac, Capacadi, and then expand it afterwards in the next five years. So we're hoping to get more funding from our DC and the province to help us out, because again, this is be be a huge destination for the maritime provinces for around Canada. So huge project with a huge opportunity for us. So that's our goal, is to finish this. We'll provide more updates. The funding from our DC sort of dried up last year, so we're working on getting more funding.
Thank you, Roll. The second part, I guess, the the big line for, I guess, council, as we've lived it for the past four years, is the address social challenges to ease pressures on municipalities. That's a big, that's a large statement to make. Can you expand on what exactly the regional commission would do to help us as city council?
Yeah, we've struggled on that to find out what our role is and how we can help without being a burden on our municipal partners. So we've tried to find those gaps where we can help, what are the projects that we can help? There's a lot of discussion around the table. I think September twenty-seventh would be a great opportunity to see what challenges can we help our municipal partners to. Our other municipal partners are having challenges with social issues also. So although it's more prevalent in the downtown, they also have their issues on homelessness and poverty and mental health and so on. So it's trying to find that space. We're still new, you know, we started in two thousand and twenty-four. Our director that we hired did fantastic work, so much good work that they seconded her to the province to help do the work for the rest of the province, which again, I think is important for us, because we don't want to be the only region doing great work and the others not doing great work and creating some more issues for our region. So we're hoping that the province can work with the other regional service commissions to try to address issues throughout the region.
Yeah, we certainly welcome your collaboration. Merci, madame. Thank you, madame. Thank you. Merci madame, thank you, madame, thank you.
Merci, Monsieur Kingston.
Thank you, Roland, thank you, your worship. Thank you, Councilor Kingston.
When I think about looking at trying to get a pool in the north end and I look at your budget I don't know, I don't even think we'd have enough to get the excavator up there. But I guess my question is, is that, you know, we talk about collaboration and with all the communities. But one of the things that I find is that there's so many of the new communities that have been formed. They're having so many problems internally. And when you have problems internally, I'm not quite sure how they can help others when they can't help themselves. So I'm just wondering, in, in your, in your dealing with, with the, with the commission, have you never thought maybe of having somebody trained or be able to go into these places, places? And, and you know, there was some, you know, high prof, I wouldn't say high profile, but they're in the paper about, you know, people being suspended when they didn't have the right to do it. So I'm just wondering, you know, I would think that that would be one of the parts that I would, would like to see the, the South Regional Commission get involved in because some of these, some of these communities, communities are going to fall apart. So what's, what's your answer?
Beautiful question and I love it. It is definitely one of our objectives from our board. So when we had our working session this year, I think the common message was we need to help our, our smaller partners that are struggling if we can. So can we provide education? Make sure that the province offers good onboarding for next year. I think that's extremely vital. But for us, it's important that all our municipal partners are healthy and stable. Because you're right, it doesn't take many to be on stress, creating issues because their budgets or their municipalities struggling after post-reform.
Yeah, I, I would say though, is that like, you know, we, we, like, like here, we, we do a lot of discussing, but you know, what is the, the path going forward? Like after you've had your discussion, so where does the board stand on it? Do for twenty twenty-six, for instance, are we going to hire somebody or are we going to have somebody trained to be able to go out and, and, and do that? Like, so you, you, you're meeting with these people and you, you know which ones are having trouble before it gets to the newspaper and so it gets to media. So i- i- are you discussing the fact that these are going to get together or have somebody go talk to them and try to introduce them like how bylaws work, how motions work? Just simple things?
Yes, so on that, we are planning to have some educational sessions for even our planners, our municipal governments to, to make sure that they are all aware. Hopefully, the province, I know, is working on it too. U M N B, La F M N B want to make sure that there's that training because I think that's been one of our problems at some of the municipal levels that they didn't get that training. I went to a U M N B session where I sort of gave an update on R R S E and some of the new members were talking about things that they shouldn't be talking about. So not knowing, so and this is members from the region. But for us, absolutely, it's going to be important that we work. And I think when we had our working weekend session with the mayors, there was two new mayors, new deputy mayors that were filling in. They really appreciated the collaboration. So one of the things that I look at since two thousand thirteen, when the regional service commissions were formed, much more collaboration around the mayor's table. Everybody understands what the other municipalities going through and there's a lot of collegial help on the administrators level, same thing. People are working better together, helping each other out. We have sent staff over to some of those struggling municipalities to help out. It's not easy, it's difficult situations and, but if there is a role that we can play, I think our mayors have told us, let's do it.
That's great. So if we could just, as a council, I mean, you know, when we, when I look at the budget, you know, you know, I guess you could use it as the theory as the dog and the tails. I mean, you know, there's some, there's some, we seem to be to have the biggest budget going through. So I would just like to have some type of response to where we're at with this, like down the road, like not, like not every month, but every quarterly, like where we're at, we're trying to help these other people. Because we, I look at our senior staff here, you know, we've got some of the best, we're the best in the province. And if you need something, you know, even as a guidance, like these people are, are very, very well informed.
Yeah, and we've done that. We've sent our CFO to, to help out some of the municipalities that it, it's been a struggle for some of those small municipalities going from three separate communities to one taking in seventy percent of LSDs with thirty percent former municipalities and having all of those tax rates with one or two staff. Not an easy fix. So we've been trying to help them, providing and, and again, I love the direction from our mayors, you know, give them some assistance. Because it is much better for everyone if everybody can, can be healthy as a region. On your budget, like you're, you're right. I mean, we've tried to keep it as low as possible so that our municipal partners don't have a, a financial pain with it. But as a region, we can decide to increase some of these, like let's say, regional transportation or the regional trail. We want to go quicker. We can look at increasing some of those budget figures if our municipal partners want us to.
Well, I don't want to get into budgets because of the assessment freeze, but I, I don't think this is the year to do it. But I, I would appreciate some, some, may, maybe some feedback regards to the small communities. I appreciate it, thank you, your worship.
Merci, Madame Lamarras. I, I just wanted to add.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. City manager, you have the floor.
And I know that the, the administrators' table that meets regularly, almost monthly, except maybe for the summer, that the CAOs are always talking about some of those challenges between communities, regardless if it's a smaller communities and in, within the Southeast Regional Service Commission. And I think that with the mayor's table or the board table and the administrators seems to develop that strong relationships where we can provide support as needed.
In addition, I think it's very important. We've got a smaller collaboration committee of some of the smaller municipalities working together so that we can help them collaborate. So they've got water systems that oftentimes there's one municipal operator to run a water system who goes on vacation and it's almost like if the mayor's got to run the system. Well, could we have one water operator helping them all out to be able to provide them some backup? And we're looking at bylaw enforcement. We're looking at a number of different files that they could do better as a region than each independently. So that is going to be regional collection is another one where they used to get all the phone calls for waste diversion or solid waste collection. Well, now they're coming to us. So it's helping them reduce theirs, what they need to do for, for servicing.
Merci, pas d'autres questions?
I don't see any other questions, so Roland, I'd like to thank you very much.
Every mayor shares the same passion for the region, so thank you.
Thank you so very much. Well, thank you, have a great day.
To twenty thirty-five report and Francesco Calazo and David Campbell are here to give that presentation. And I believe that there are some handouts that I'm going to hand out to council.
Bonjour, Francesco.
Good afternoon, Francesco. Good afternoon, your worship.
Respective capacities. I am sandwiched between Roland and David Campbell. So my, my work is going to be easy because I'm going to be short. It's just a, an introduction on David's presentation. We're not discussing economic development per se, but it'll be a pleasure if you're interested in deep diving into a presentation about economic development in the future. So
Before moving on to the study that David Campbell prepared for the city of Moncton, I'd like to see a few words to put this work in a larger context of the twenty thirty-five vision for the city of Moncton. This initiative is the result of a pressing issue. How can we prepare ourselves in a smart way and in a proactive way to take the challenges ahead for the next ten years? So it's not about predicting the future. It's about making smarter and more resilient choices to strengthen our capacities today to face the challenges ahead based on what we already know.
To do exactly that, the cost benefit analysis on labour retention now actively used by working and be Professor Bourgeois work on the projected impact of artificial intelligence on the workforce. Richard Sayan reports on housing and workforce development. Each of these has already become a tool for serious strategic public decision-making. And all of them have a strategic site aside ten years out. Vision twenty thirty-five belongs in that same toolbox, but with a specific mission to offer a shared frame of reference for all thirteen communities in southeastern New Brunswick. Not a master plan, but a blueprint, a regional compass to support informed local action. Since the local governance reform, this kind of regional thinking has become more than useful. It has become essential. In a region as diverse as ours, with francophone and anglophone communities, with green, blue and urban economies, alignment does not happen on its own. We are on paper, as Roland said, the region least likely to move is one. And yet our mayors, with the support of our CEO Roland, whom you heard, you heard earlier from, have done something truly remarkable. They have chosen to collaborate, not out of obligation, but out of shared ambition. And that's why southeastern New Brunswick is, is now often cited as the, the region where the model works best. And with that reputation come expectations and new responsibilities. It is in that spirit that we find ourselves at the heart of bold and in some cases historic initiatives. One of them is the first ever OECD International Forum on value-centered, place-based economic development, which will be held right here in Moncton in just over a month and to which, of course, you're all invited. When you see today's data and projections, think of them not as a final answers, but as starting points for your own reflections, conversations and deliberations. Because each municipality has its own strategy, its own needs and its own tempo. No one is here to tell you what to do, but what we can offer and what Vision twenty thirty-five is designed to offer is a high-quality set of tools to help you do it better. If you allow a simple image, we're not providing recipes, we're providing sharp, well-made knives. Whether you're working on growth, housing, workforce or infrastructure, the right tools make it easier to work clearly, cleanly, quickly and safely and to see more clearly what you're working with. That kind of clarity did not exist before. The data you'll see today is the result of months of integration and statistical processing across different sources to build for the first time a coherent picture of the southeast as a region. This work will continue. With the next census, we plan to update and expand the platform so we can keep pace with the realities on the ground. It's part of a longer journey, one guided by what I like to call the three sides. Pinsight, learning from the past, insight, understanding the present and foresight, anticipating what lies ahead.
Our objective is to continue to transport this perspective into knowledge so that each decision can be taken at the best time with the best data available. And thank you again for this opportunity to be here today and thank you for these well-thought-out exchanges that we're going to have, I'm sure.
All right, thanks, Francesco. It's great to be back in front of council again, your worship, and see some old faces and some older faces. It's been a while since I saw a councillor. So I'm going to go through this fairly quickly. It is, Francesco gave a good description of what we're trying to do here, although I'm not going to start throwing any knives. We'll, we'll stick to the, to the data. Before I get into my presentation, one of the things we've been trying to understand is what's happening with the population in the region and in the community since the last time the population was published by Stats Canada for July one of last year. Because of course, there's been a lot of changes with IRCC and the federal government, a lot of our temporary population, once their work permits are ending, are being shipped out of the country. So we want to try to understand what's happening there. We don't have great data, but we do know from the labour force survey, which is done every month for the city and for the region, that the population has continued to grow. If you look at the population aged fifteen and older, between June of last year and June of this year, it's up four percent across the Moncton region. So that continues pretty strong growth. Of course, in, in Nova Scotia, the population is actually stagnated and it's actually, depending on what you're looking at, actually starting to decline. So there's some concerns there. If you look at the workforce growth, and this is not in the presentation here, but I just wanted to share it with you. The one-year growth in the pop, in the workforce, so that's the number of people either working or not working, aged fifteen and older is up five percent year over year between June of last year and June of this year. So it does look like this community is continuing some level of growth, but we do need to keep an eye on things because of the reality of some of these changes, which are impacting both immigration, temporary workers and international students. I would say there's one piece of data that is concerning. Coming out of the labour force survey, we are seeing a rise in unemployment among young people in our community, particularly those aged fifteen to nineteen. So not as many high school students and younger individuals are finding work this summer compared to previous years. So we are seeing some concern on that front and we can talk about that if you want. If you look at the unemployment rate, however, among those aged twenty-five to fifty-four in June of this year, it's the same four point four percent as it was last year. So really, this is a, the unemployment situation right now is among our youth, not among adults. So how does this work? Do I just swipe this way? Okay. Okay, great. So I'm not going to talk too much about the history of the city of Moncton. You will find a, a short, two-page sort of summary of key milestones in the history of the city because what we're trying to do is tie the future to the present, to the past, as, as Francesco indicated earlier. We will talk about right now the Moncton economy today, and I've just got a couple of slides to talk about that. And I can answer any questions you might have in the Q and A. The reality is the CMA and the city have seen very, very sharp population growth, not only in the last few years, but going back fifteen years, twenty years or more. This community has really, really outperformed, outgrown every other community in the region of the larger communities, Halifax, St. John, Fredericton and others. So that's been a really good news story, but as we go through this, one of the recurring themes is, is how do we manage growth? And maybe in some cases, you can actually grow so fast that your services can't keep up. And I think that's something the city needs to think about, and I'm sure you are. If you look at the business counts from Stats Canada, there were about thirty-one hundred employer businesses as of June of last year in the city with about sixty-three thousand people working here in the city. And what we were trying to do, which is a little different than the census, the employment by occupation and industry at the census level is for the people that live in the city. We were interested in this report with the people that work and the industries that are actually operational here in the city. And you'll see throughout this presentation, you'll see that there is a considerable difference between the workforce that lives here and the workforce that actually works in the city. Okay? The other thing we did in this report is we compared you to your peers, so the larger cities across the region. And again, all of this data, unless we only had it available for the CMA, we were focusing specifically on the city of Moncton. We compared Moncton to Halifax, St. John's, St. John and Fredericton. And this is one of the stats we looked at, the top ten employment sectors. So the first column here is, is city and that's the number, total employment. So the number one sector for employment in the city is the hospital sector, followed by the education services sector. And these are three-digit NAICS codes, professional scientific services three, so you can go down the list there. You see healthcare is actually on the list three times. And then compare that to Halifax, St. John's, St. John and Fredericton. So there are some differences. So education is, tends to be number one or two across all of the five. But if you look at the number of employment in the hospital sector, Moncton really stands out from that perspective. In Fredericton, it's only ranks fifth among the top ten in Fredericton. If you go down the list, you can see there's a few other differences depending on the city and depending on the community here. So this is just gives us a sense, again, trying to understand where Moncton fits compared to your peers elsewhere in the region. We also look at the number of net new jobs added over the last decade to give us a sense of what's changing in terms of the workforce. And again, healthcare is a big one. One of the One of the recurring themes in this report is a lot of the growth in the economy over the last decade has been in the public sector. And that's not uncommon when you have cities that are growing strongly. The population is growing strongly, the need for services is growing strongly. If you looked at these numbers, the previous decade and even further back, there was a higher share of private sector growth. But I think as we look to the future, again, one of the recurring themes is we're going to have to be looking at private sector growth to drive the economy moving forward because of some of the issues around public sector restraint and spending in the years ahead. You can see professional scientific and technical services also had very strong growth. The beverage and tobacco is mostly the cannabis facility is driving most of the growth there. And then some construction and other industries have seen growth as well over the last decade. And again, that's businesses that are here in the community. If you look at the number of industries in Moncton by employment concentration, so that's not total employment, but the relative share compared to other jurisdictions. You can see here, if you compare Moncton to the other four CMAs or the average employment in the other four CMAs, that cannabis facility really stands out. It's been probably the largest private sector investment we've seen in a long time in this community. There's about 500 employees out there. It's the largest facility, 500,000 square feet. So that was a big one. The gambling industry here is bigger. There is a gambling sector in Halifax, but relatively speaking, or relative to the share of your workforce here in the city, it's larger here. Business support services, or the what we used to call call centers or back offices, continues to be a major employer in this community, although the number is coming down, the total employment. You still have 6.5 times more employment in that sector compared to the average of your peers here across the region. And then there's some wholesale industries, of course. Transportation and warehousing and wholesale is a key part of the economy here. And then healthcare. Beverage manufacturing is a big one here relative, again, to your peers. The insurance sector is big here relative to your peers as well. So one of the things that Stats Canada does for selected CMAs across the country, this isn't for the municipality, but it looks at opening businesses and closing businesses. And they actually started this around the time of COVID. And they've kept it up since then. So one of the things we like to see in terms of the entrepreneurial churn is more businesses starting than closing. And in fact, if you look at the numbers going back to 2021, we've had 105 here in the Moncton CMA for every 100 closers. That's actually better than St. John's, a little worse than Halifax and better than St. John. And they don't prepare this data for Fredericton. So we are seeing more businesses opening than closing. But you can just see in any economy, there's lots of churn, lots of businesses start and stop on a monthly basis in this community. And we want to be a place that has a very strong environmental, or excuse me, entrepreneurial base so that we're seeing more businesses starting than closing in our community. We also looked at exports. This is a particularly timely issue because of what's happening south of the border. And it turns out Moncton is, I think, the least exposed to the US market of any CMA in the country. If not the least, it's in the bottom two or three. And this is basically the value of international exports per capita. And again, this data is only available at the CMA level from Stats Can. You can see St. John, our partner, sister city in south of the province here, though, is the most reliant on international exports because of wood products, refined oil products, and so on. So we, this community is not particularly exposed to what's happening in the US directly. But if you think about indirectly and the other impacts in the long run of a trade war with the US or trade challenges with the US, it'll filter into this community. But directly, there are relatively few businesses. Now, the businesses that are here, that export into the US are facing challenges. But relatively speaking, we are less exposed to the US. Most of the exports from this community are going elsewhere in Canada. But we also have a very strong services-based exports. And services-based exports are not subject to, at least not as of yet, subject to US tariffs. So let's talk a little bit about population and households. So I mentioned earlier about the long-term population growth. That just shows it there. The city of Moncton has added 55% to its population compared to 46% in Fredericton, 36 in Halifax, and down to just 9% in the city of St. John. And that's going all the way back to 2001. On an absolute, so on a percentage change basis, Dieppe grew faster. But on an absolute basis, far more population growth here in the city of Moncton compared to the city of Dieppe over that period. One of the main reasons is permanent resident admissions, so immigration. So if you go back 10, 15, 20 years, most of the population growth in this community came from migration within New Brunswick, people moving here from northern New Brunswick, other parts of the province. So intra-provincial migration drove most of the population growth. But you can see here, starting really before the pandemic, but really hitting pace or a stride in 2021, 2022, it's been international arrivals. So these are people that are coming here either as students or temporary workers or directly as permanent residents. But in the last year or two, we've been among the top in the country, the city and the CMA for immigrant attraction to the community. So let's talk a little bit about the workforce here in Moncton. So as I mentioned before, there's about 63,000 employed by companies and organizations in the community. The top employment sector by occupation are sales and service, which is a reflection of the service-oriented nature of our economy. Over 20,000 people are employed in sales and service occupations. We have another 12,000 in business, finance, and administration occupations. So a big, big employer in our community. And many of these, by the way, are exposed to artificial intelligence. We didn't talk about that in the report. But as we look to the future, much of our economy is exposed to some of these big technological changes that are coming. Trades, transportation, equipment operators, another big employment by occupational group. We still are a very transportation and regional warehousing sector economy here with about just over 10,000. Again, this is in the city, organizations in the city. And then from there, it goes down to occupation in education law and so on. So that's the main groups by occupation. And then, you know, we talk in here quite a bit about the integrated workforce, but also about the integrated economy. So one of the interesting things from this research is just revealing the symbiotic nature between the city and all of the other municipalities here in the southeast. The labor market is very, very integrated. The labor market, the workforce in the city swells every day by over 80%. People coming in here to work jobs here in the city. So without those adjacent communities, without that workforce, your ability to provide your employers with the workforce they need would be constrained. So you rely on, for about 80% growth in your workforce on a daily basis from people coming in from places like Dieppe and Riverview, the Moncton Parish, and so on. Some of your residents actually work elsewhere. So about 3,400 as of the time of the census worked in Dieppe, 825 in Riverview, and so on. But the bulk of the flow is inward into the city. If you look at the concentration of legal services and professional services and personal services, retail services here in the city, they're all outsized relative to your population because individuals in the wider area are coming to the city of Moncton to access those services. So just want to keep that in sort of front of mind when you're thinking about regional collaboration and thinking about your role as kind of the hub for just about everything. So if there's tourism going on in the wider region, the hotels are here. Many of the restaurants are here, many of the services are here. So it's very mutually beneficial when you have growth in the wider region that benefits by default what's happening here, the economy here in the city of Moncton. So one of the things we wanted to do is look at population growth and projecting that through 2035. Now, again, this is probably more salient in the smaller municipalities. I'm sure your team is looking at various population scenarios here in the city. But we did this for all of them, so we did it for you as well. So it's just another data point for you to use when comparison, comparing here internally with the work that's being done by your team internally. So the first one we looked at was what would happen if your workforce did not grow at all? So your workforce has been growing very strongly. We talked about that already. But let's say you wanted to look at a scenario, what would it take? Well, because of the age of the workforce, because of the share of the population that is heading toward retirement, and it's about 23, 22, 3% of everybody in this community that's in the workforce is over the age of 55. So as these people move out of the workforce, in order to replace them, the model suggests you're going to need a population growth rate of around 1.3% just to keep the workforce from shrinking in this community. Now, there's lots of other factors, and we talked about that in the report, the mobility of workforce within the region, all of the things that we just talked about. But just as a general rule, based on the model here, the assumptions here, you still need to grow your population modestly if you don't want your workforce to shrink by 2035. Now, when you go to scenario two, this looks at what would it take to have a strong or a good rate of growth in your workforce in the coming years? And that basically says if the city grows its population by an average of 2.3% per year, and that's about the same growth rate as you've seen over a very long period of time, all the way from 2009 to 2024, that's the average growth rate in the population. So if you continued to grow at that rate, you would see just about 6,000 additional in the workforce between now and 2035. And that would allow new industries to emerge. It would allow your economy to continue to grow, but in a fairly managed fashion in the years ahead. Now, if you go to scenario three, this is what you're on now since 2019. So you have grown, as we talked about earlier, extremely fast. The historical or the growth rate in this community since 2019 has been about 3.8% per year. And that's the city, that's not the region. So you've been growing very, very strongly, your population. If you continued to grow at that rate, you would grow the workforce by over 2% per year. So by the end of 2035, you'd have over 12,000 additional people in the workforce. So as I mentioned earlier, one of the considerations for the community, for you as mayor and council, is to think about what level of growth you'd like to see and sort of plan around that level of growth. Because I would argue this level of growth would be very, very difficult to sustain without massive investments in transportation infrastructure, in service infrastructure, but also a lot of the services offered by the province, such as healthcare and education. So some communities have grown at this rate, but it's been, it's rare to see sustained growth of 3.8% in your population on an annual basis. So just to put that out there. But you've already done it over the last five years. So if that was your vision, you've proven it can be done in recent years. So the last part of the report is looking at potential growth opportunities. And again, you've got a whole economic development team working on industries and development. So this is really just meant to supplement what they're doing or just give some thoughts. And this is based on my sort of knowledge of the industries here, but also looking at some of the broader trends. As I mentioned earlier, we do need private sector growth. We would like to see in the coming years more of a focus on the private sector. You know, the public sector growth is great. We like to see public sector growth. But in terms of sort of deliberately working on private sector growth in the years ahead, post-secondary education, this is a sector you can't lose. It's a win-win. It's a sector that's high-value, generates high-paying jobs, and it provides you a talent pool. So if you can grow the post-secondary education system, it's just in terms of comparison, it's much smaller than Halifax and Fredericton, much larger than St. John. But looking at our public institutions and our private institutions, whether that's Olten's or Crandall, you can't go wrong by trying to grow that sector. Now, of course, some of the federal changes have sort of curtailed the inflow of international students, which is a bit of a concern if you're looking at growing your post-secondary education sector. Transportation and logistics, there's going to be a lot of technological change in the coming years. But you cannot, you know, they can't take away your geographic advantage at the heart of the Maritimes. So that's a sector that, even though things are going to change, should provide new growth opportunities, whether it's drones and other ways of package delivery in the coming years. Tourism, again, you're at the hub of the largest tourism industry by a wide margin in the province. And so anything that happens in the region that boosts tourism activity benefits the city. But also, the city has a lot of tourism assets as well. Food manufacturing, that is going to go, grow nationally. And I think there's opportunities to grow that sector here. We had a larger food manufacturing sector 15 or 20 years ago when we had Hub Meatpackers and some of the other larger players. But I think that's a sector that might reemerge as people like more locally-produced food, integrating more into the local agriculture sector and so on. The IT sector is positioned well for growth across the province and around the country. And although it's smaller here, relatively speaking, I think there's opportunity for growth. And then life and health sciences, we do have, we talked earlier about just the size of our healthcare sector here in the city and trying to find ways with the Atlantic Cancer Research Institute and other assets to try and grow that, UDM and some of the research it's doing as well, to be more deliberate about growing our life and health sciences sector in the years ahead. And then the final section is infrastructure considerations, and I won't talk much about this. But basically, just looking at things like housing, recreational infrastructure, making sure you've got the capacity to continue to grow in the years ahead. And I thought the housing starts per population growth was an interesting stat. Of course, year over year, you get lots of, you know, movement in terms of housing starts. But if you look at it just in terms of adjusted for population growth, we're building a lot less houses now than we were, you know, back in 2006, 2008, back in, you know, 15 years ago. Now, the population was growing more slowly back then. But, you know, housing demand and population growth are pretty well correlated. So what's happening now is we're seeing a shift. The average household size in the city, for the first time in probably 40 or 50 years, is actually getting larger. So for many years, the average household size was getting smaller year over year. And now you're seeing a shift where more young people are staying at home and living with their parents. You know, sometimes families are doubling up in the same household. If you look at apartments that used to have one or two people, now they have three or four or five. And so you're actually seeing the average household size growing in the community as a result of a long-term structural housing shortage. So some of that's a good thing. But in my opinion, getting little Johnny and Janie out of the house as quickly as possible is a good thing for them and a good thing for their parents. So just keeping an eye on housing and making sure it's aligned with demand in the years ahead. And I think that's it for my presentation. No, wait, no, there's more. Okay, thank you for that.
Merci beaucoup David.
Sorry, Your Worship, there's one more slide here, I guess. Just housing, green spaces. There's a slide in here, there's on public transportation, on access to public transportation, how many people live within a short walk of public transportation. So I encourage you to look at that. And then making sure we have green spaces. There's information in here comparing you to other municipalities on green spaces. And that's it, sorry about that. So that's the end of my presentation.
Merci David, Conseil Légère.
Thank you, Conseil Légère.
Thank you, Your Worship.
It's really, it's very concise and very clear. Read a lot of these, but this one's probably one of the best in terms of really pointing things out. I guess a couple of things. You talked about it just a few seconds ago when you talked about the housing starts and the types of housing. So, you know, we've managed, I think, 79% of all of the building permits have been apartments now. And it's been dismal in terms of building any capacity of whether we call them single-family dwellings, in terms of, you know, families of which are larger. So, and because of that, and because of the pressure of elderly people or people who are retired, not necessarily other people retired hanging out of their homes. So how would we turn that around? How do we make it so that we need a mix? We just don't have enough now. How do we turn that around?
Developers are a bit like lemmings. They all sort of rush in when a certain type of development is common. I think the city should, and I'm not an expert in this at all, but I think the city should sort of provide some direction around what types of housing you think you're going to need in the coming years. You're not guaranteeing anything, but based on your expectations for population growth and even around the cost of housing. You know, being very clear with developers around, based on the, you know, the cohorts of our households by income level, this is kind of the ranges we need. Because the industry will sometimes gravitate to the higher end, the higher range, because that's where the margins are. So I'm not, I'm not an expert, but I agree with your premise. The reason we needed more apartments is because most of the newcomers coming to the community want to live in apartments first. But once they settle down, many of them would like to go into more single-family dwelling or different types of housing and not necessarily, or even condominium. So we have one of the smallest shares of condominiums among larger cities across the country. Halifax has considerably more. Now, I understand from talking to developers and from people in the city, there's specific reasons why we're not seeing a lot of condo developments here in Moncton. But just as a general rule, I think we built a lot of apartments and a lot of capacity to support the temporary workers, the international students, and the permanent residents coming in that wanted a temporary place that they could rent until they decide if Moncton is going to be their community for the long term. Once they decide that the community is where they want to live for the long term, many of them are going to want more, you know, to live in like a duplex or a multi-unit but flat or, or a single-family dwelling. So I think you do need to be looking at that. And, and maybe we have gone a little bit too far to the, to the large sort of multi-unit rental side of things. I'm not, but I do, I do want to caveat that I'm not an expert on it.
So there could be perhaps through some deliberate zoning that only allows the construction that you actually want to, to be driven into the community. So, I'll get some thought. I was, I was interested on the, I knew there were a lot of people. Well, if you look at our three communities, we have a lot of people who live in another community that work in Moncton. I was, I was really interested in the numbers of people who commuted every day. And, you know, you talked about over 18,000 people, and of which 4,500 from DEP, 3,800 from Riverview, and then 28, 2,500 from the Maple Hills, but also the reverse, which is that residents from Moncton commute, you know, to DEP and to Riverview and so on. And I think it really, that's the first time I've actually seen it sort of presented that way. And again, that's, I think, encouraging because it really shows, you know, the tri-community. So that's just something that I took away. But my, the biggest thing was what is that scenario when you talked about population growth? And it almost looks like scenario two is an interesting one, where you grow the population at about 3.2%. And I think overall, we end up with a labor force increase of about 1%. And that's with, but throughout this, you always talk about the fact that 100% of anybody over 65 will not be working.
In 10 years, yeah.
Pardon me?
In 10 years.
In 10 years, exactly, yeah. But then on the other hand, you, you, in, in the report mentioned that I think currently it's, I don't know, something maybe like 17% and yet up to 30% of seniors or people over 65 could be working part-time. Just some comments on that. And, and I agree with you, you know, having that conversation and having a number and being deliberate in terms of wanting to do things is how we'll be successful.
Yeah. So I, I will probably be working at 75, but most people are retired by 75. So anybody over 65, we just assume they'd be retired by 75. Some will not, but it'll be a pretty small number. So, but I think we, there's lots of opportunity to encourage people to stay in the workforce longer. And that is a really good way to, to address some of our workforce challenges, particularly because a lot of the pain points in the workforce now are in service jobs or in seasonal jobs, like in the summer to support tourism. So you could end up in a situation where, where seniors are working for three, four months in the summer or, or in the fall or in the spring or whatever, but, but, but to earn a little extra money or whatever. So we've, we've talked about that at a variety of different tables. And it would be a way to kind of ease the pressure. But I just wanted to correct you on the population growth numbers. It's 2.3 in that, not 3.2.
Oh, 3.8, that's right.
3.8.
That is the fastest, yeah.
So I do think, and again, it's up, you know, council should decide what level of growth it would like to see. You can't put up a little toll booth on the border, right? It's not, it's not that deliberate. But the city can sort of clearly sort of set forth what it would like to see in terms of population growth and build and work to that in the future.
Okay. And one last question. What do you think's driving the unemployment of young people? You were saying, and I, and I've heard that from a lot of young people who had great difficulty getting summer jobs. So, so what, what's happening and what can, what needs to change?
It's a bit of speculation, but I've had conversations with people that, that are pretty close to it. It looks like a lot of temporary workers are waiting for their permanent residency and they're working in jobs, they're adults, but they're working in jobs like in food service and retail that used to be held by the students.
In order to maintain.
Well, they're in a work permit situation, waiting for their permanent residency to hit. And so they're not qualified to work in those jobs per se. They're, but they're working those jobs as a temporary situation until they get their PR. So this is again, another situation where we have to be more thoughtful and, and, and intelligent about how we handle, you know, things like immigration and temporary workers. We don't want, we don't want temporary workers to replace domestic workers in the workforce, if at all possible. Because it just, it, it undermines the case for immigration. If, if a lot of parents can't find jobs for their kids and they blame that on immigration, it hurts the case for immigration.
And is this something that the province understands? And what can we do as a municipality to bring it again to their attention and, and to make things change?
Yeah, the province knows this, and it's working its way through the system. As I said, you know, people that reached the end of their permits now are not getting renewed, many of them. So they're, they're going to have to go back to their home country, which in many cases is, is a problem. But the reality is, there was a rumor a few years ago that you could get your PR faster if you were in Moncton. And I don't, we don't, nobody knows where that came from. But it, so we had the surge of people coming from Central Canada, temporary workers from Central Canada, and they worked in these sectors like retail and so on. So there's a little bit of that happening right now. We can't, I can't put a number on it for you. But it's, it's one of the reasons why we've seen the big spike in permanent residency, because people had come here, you know, assuming they would get, for whatever reason, they'd been sitting in Ontario for years and hadn't got their PR. And there was a rumor they could get their PR if they came here. So that, this is not factual, it's anecdotal. But it's one of the, I think, one of the reasons.
Okay. Well, again, thanks a lot, and thanks to the Service Commission for asking you to do this. I think it's a great report, and that's certainly something that we need to incorporate in the decisions and moving forward, things that we're doing here in City Council. Thank you. Merci.
Merci, conseil léger. Conseil bourgeois.
Thank you, Consulé Léger. Consulé Bourgeois, thank you very much, Your Worship.
Campbell was a part of the city's finance committee for a couple of years, about a decade or so ago. Appreciate your work, like your work. I do have five questions. I am very concerned about our retail sector. As you point out, it represents a huge chunk of our jobs. It's a huge chunk of that 32% slice of jobs that represent our biggest sector. We are the hub of the Maritimes, a lot of people from PEI, Northern New Brunswick, Amherst, St. John, come to shop at Costco and other stuff. Retail sector, big boxes in the future dominated by online shopping. Thoughts, concerns? Am I right to be concerned?
Most of the, most of the forecasts I've seen overemphasize the demise of the retail sector. It turns out a lot of people actually want to physically go and shop in stores. I think it's going to continue to be an issue. It's going to continue to erode, but it's not, it's not going to completely lead to the decimation of retail. Because again, people, it seems, people actually want, they want a tactile, they want tactile retail experiences. So I think what's going to happen in the future is there's going to be more work among the shops to, to, to become destinations, to bring people, to want, to make them want to come in store. But I think you're right to be concerned about it. It, it's a huge sector, it's a huge part of our regional economy. We could end up with more drones and other types of delivery, right? You could, you could, you're seeing a lot of that in, in other cities. But yeah, I think it is, it's a concern. We just didn't in this document want to get into sort of overlaying technological change and so on into the forecast. We're just saying if you grow your industry, if you grow your workforce, you'll have the talent to allow other entrepreneurs and other industries to grow in your community. And the history would tell us if your workforce is stagnant or declining, it's not a good thing for your economy. Now, that might change in the future if we get a lot more productive and if technology takes over and robotics. But for a report like this, we didn't want to come in and say, "Don't worry, City Hall, you know, if the workforce declines, it's going to be good." Because there's no historical parallel to that. So we, we would like to see the city continuing to grow at a modest pace and providing growth in the workforce and growth in the entrepreneurship base as well.
One of my questions, we're still related technology, you alluded to it, artificial intelligence and robotics. We're not very big in manufacturing. But those are the two sectors that I think might be more impacted than any others in terms of artificial intelligence. So is there anything the city can do? Or are you confident that the province and other economic development agencies have sufficient resources, capacities to help the businesses in our region, city prosper in these changing times because of AI and robotics?
It's such a fast-moving issue. There's a group called Tech Impact here in New Brunswick that through the province has grants to help people try to figure out AI and robotics. So I think there is a, a growing understanding at the provincial level about what this could do to our economy, in both in good and bad ways, right? At the end of the day, we may end up with a lot more highly-productive industries with a lot less people working. And then we might have to start taxing capital, which is one of the things I've been thinking about. It's that most of our income now comes from taxing labor. We might have to start taxing capital more. But I think, you know, this is a small province. We don't have a ton of capacity to be thinking this stuff through. So I urge the provincial government and local agencies here to be, to be, to put this on the radar, to try to work with industry associations, you know, to try to figure out what this could mean for, for all of our big industries. Like in the wider region, we've got the fishing sector and agriculture sector. That they're all going to be impacted by AI. And by the way, our business services sector. So there was this move to sort of automate call centers, right? And then people pushed back. And, but now it's coming back again with AI. And so we could end up losing, you know, several thousand jobs because people want to pick up the phone and they want to ask, you know, they want to talk to a person. But that will probably change somewhat too.
Question number three. How important is it to have an airport that has a flight to Europe on a regular basis and a flight to New York City on a regular basis?
It would be beneficial. You're never going to get the US flight because you have to have preclearance now. And the US is not going to allow, I doubt the US will ever allow any more preclearance. So you're probably not going to get that. You could get a flight to Europe because you don't have that concern, the preclearance or the, they're the US Customs at the airport. But I think, you know, a stronger domestic airport with more flights, more access, pulling from a wider catchment here, area here, I think is probably the best solution for the airport. You know, if, if you could have a little puddle jumper that would take you from here to Halifax and get on that direct flight to Europe, that's probably a better solution than trying to, than trying to have that direct flight from Moncton. It's not impossible, we've had it in the past, as you know, but I think it's, it's unlikely. Like I said, I'd prefer a PAL or another airline to take us there. Or even a, even a maritime bus, I don't know. Maybe, we just interviewed the guy, the CEO of Maritime Bus for our podcast. Maybe we should take the bus more.
Or train, if it was available?
Yeah.
Final question on immigration, there's two parts. One is a lot of the immigrants coming in, looking for job employment and everything else, but we got a lot of our baby boomers that are retiring, and some of them are business owners. And there was a few years ago, a challenge of succession planning. Is there a case to be made? Or are we doing this sort of matchmaking to slide this growing population, immigration, but other incoming as well, to take over the businesses rather than being bought up by companies elsewhere?
I'd say it's getting slightly better than in the past, but it's not great. We still require the immigrant entrepreneur to have a business plan, but it's not that directional. And so a lot of immigrant entrepreneurs go into sort of traditional sectors like food service and so on. And I've said for many years, we should be more directive. We should be saying, we need more in, whether it's transportation or whether it's in manufacturing or whether it's in IT or whatever those sectors where we have a high share. The challenge, there's lots of challenges there. The entrepreneurs actually don't want to admit publicly that they're looking for a buyer because they think it'll reduce their value. So we should be, somebody should be working with the accounting firms and the legal firms that actually deal with these elderly entrepreneurs and try to find a better way to matchmake them. But I think, I would say it's getting a little bit better. If you go around, you'll see there's more of that. You'll see immigrant entrepreneurs that now own businesses that used to be owned by somebody locally. But there's, I think there's a lot more work to be done.
Okay.
And maybe some of that leadership story should come from the municipal level, to be very clear. Like this is what we see, and we want the province to support that.
Okay. Duly noted by staff, I hope. Final question. Immigration historically, after five years, most immigrants would land in Montreal, Toronto, Vancouver. Do we have enough data now to know that this wave of immigration over the past five, six years are staying? Or do we know, or we'll have to wait 2026 census and 2031 census to see if it's still 75%? Or if we've been able to reduce it to 50% or so?
Yeah. I think this, this wave that I mentioned earlier, the people come, the immigrants coming here from Central Canada to get their PR, how that filters out is going to be something, it'll take a few years to see. But I think the retention data is suggesting we're getting better. We're now, this community is over 50% three- and four-year retention rates, which is 10 to 15 percentage points higher than it used to be. So I think, and, and the other thing is the, the, the high-cost environment in places like Toronto is, is now actually pushing people out. So you're seeing immigrants move here permanently. That there's, there's basically two things that lead to retention of immigrants. One is, the very first one by far is economic. If you don't have a job that matches your skills, interests, and education, your chances of staying long-term are very low. Second is social integration. If you get involved in churches or sports groups, or your kids' like school, very high chance you're going to, you're going to be retained in the community. So the reality is a lot of immigrants are being priced out of these very expensive places. Montreal is actually not too bad because they haven't seen the level of immigration recently. But Vancouver and Toronto are really pricing themselves out of the immigrant market right now, which is benefiting secondary cities. But one of the big trends over the last five years in Canada, actually more like seven years since before the pandemic, has been that most of the growth in immigration in Canada has not been in Toronto, Montreal, Vancouver. It's been in Regina, Moncton, Summerside, and Yarmouth. And so this is my concern when the feds are now talking about going back to 350,000. Is, who's going to hurt? Is it going to be Toronto, Montreal, Vancouver? Probably not, right? Because of historical realities. So it's probably going to end up hurting, you know, the secondary communities. Now, there's a very strong commitment from the federal government around Francophone immigration, which is going to benefit Moncton for sure. But in the long run, I worry that this, this rush to reduce the national numbers is going to be particularly negative on, on smaller communities in the country.
Thank you very much for letting me pick your brains. Much appreciated.
Merci, Madam.
Merci, Conseil Bourgeois. Conseil Butler.
Thank you, Worship.
Thank you, Consulé Bourgeois. Consulé Butler.
Maybe you do have the data is, are the education level that we have in the city of, city of Moncton or even the greater Moncton area. I was reading an article not too long ago that regards to foreign students, international students to being cut back on. So when I look at the, the retail stores, federal and provincial governments are very lax in enforcing any rules. But one of the, the young people I spoke to said that, you know, they, they work more than their permit allows. They're only supposed to, an international student, only supposed to work 20, I think, 20 hours a week. There's, there's no, nobody watching the, the amount. But as these, as they start taking back the amount of students coming in, who fulfills that? You know, when we talk about we want our retail and other industries, you know, do we have, like, I, I just, I had to take my, my vehicle over to a garage the other day, got an taxi and came home, you know, he was a newcomer. So is the education level coming in with the refugees and the immigrants, you say, match the jobs? But, you know, I, I don't, you know, when I see a person, I would hope that a person that has an education, a high education, not coming here just to drive cab, I, I find that, you know, it's not really fair to anybody.
Yeah. We don't have great data on that, but we do have the people that are arriving here by intended occupational code or what's called a NOT code. And it, we do, it does tend to be people that would prefer to work in IT, but maybe can't get a job in IT. And some of them do end up working in restaurants or retail or taxi. That's the, that's the classic one, I guess. So, so I think, I still think there's more work we can done to be more thoughtful and strategic about immigration and international students and temporary workers. I think one of the, you know, if you look historically, a lot of the individuals that worked in the retail sector and in the food sector and so on were students. But the domestic student numbers have gone down year after year for many, many years. So the international students were kind of taking up that slack. But then you had this whole cohort of international or temporary workers working in, in these sort of service industries, which are overeducated. I had a owner of a manufacturing plant here in Moncton was bragging to me that he had a person working with a master's degree working on the floor, shop floor. And I said, "You realize that person's not going to be there long?" And he was like, "Oh yeah, but it's just kind of fun." Well, you know, if you've got a master's degree and you're working on a line, it's not great. So obviously that person was in the case of waiting for another opportunity to emerge either here or elsewhere. Because if you have a master's degree, you're not going to work the line in a manufacturing plant long-term.
But I, I was also thinking, David, like when we're talking about the education level, like what we have coming out of high school. Like, you know, where, where is our education? like what we have coming out of high school, like, you know, where, where is our education level? Do they stop in grade eight, grade nine, grade 10? You know, is there still that dropout rate that's going on?
Okay, so in general, Moncton has less university graduates in the workforce and more college graduates and more trades in the workforce than Fredericton or Halifax and even St. John. It's been a more blue collar workforce historically because of the transportation sector, because of the retail sector and so on, which don't require, necessarily require university. So it, my view is you try to calibrate as much as possible, you know, your post-secondary education to the demands in the workforce. And, you know, and I think we've done a pretty good job of that in, in recent years. Now, you, you, this is a bit inside baseball, but I do think you want to overgraduate in industries you want to grow, like IT. Because if you only, if you need 10 IT workers and you only graduate 10 IT workers, then you have no room for growth. So if you need 10 plumbers, graduate 10 plumbers. So I think there's some of that going on. But in general, the, the workforce here is less educated. I'm just not sure the solution is to go out and triple or quadruple the number of university graduates if you need more college graduates or trades. So I think there still has to be alignment there around supply and demand. And, and I think that's, I don't even know if that answers your question, but.
It, it's good. Yeah, I just, I just think sometimes that we, when we talk about, councillor Bourgeois was talking about AI and how things are going to change here really rapidly. And that blue collar coming out of high school and just trying to find a job is going to, could be a little bit more difficult.
Yeah, for transportation warehousing, yes, but I tell you right now, AI will never replace a plumber.
No.
Not in the short term, or electrician or any kind of those skilled red sea, red seal trades. I mean, if, if I was properly advising my kids, they're now all in their careers, but I probably would have recommended trades because those are going to be good. So yeah, so you have to just look and see where is AI going to affect? I don't think it's going to affect sort of those hardcore construction trades for sure.
For sure. Thank you. Thank you.
Merci conseiller Butler. Thank you so much, David.
Thank you councillor Butler.
David, thank you. Great statistics. And I think you indicated earlier, 23% of, or municipal leisure of our current population is over 55, correct?
Yep.
And workforce, workforce.
Population, yeah.
I guess it's more of a housing question and I, I guess I fit in that category having sold my home three years ago. Now apartment living, wouldn't that, I, I guess I'm, well, we're not decrying the use of apartments in Moncton or the, or the number of bills. Wouldn't that 23%, are we not gravitating to those apartment buildings are being built now?
Absolutely. So you're always going to need a larger share of multi-unit in the city. I'm just saying, I think you can go a little bit too far. But yes, you definitely want older citizens to downsize into environments that, that are more appropriate to their situation. I downsized a few years ago. Unfortunately, it took me out of the city. But, but yes, absolutely. That's one of the considerations. When you look to the future, you want to make sure you've got that good quality, multi-unit housing for our seniors as they downsize. And by the way, when they downsize, they open up, in many cases, a single family dwelling for a family moving into the community.
Absolutely. So the, the trend continues of the new Monctonians basically renting for a brief time and then looking for single family dwellings. That's, that's.
That's absolutely right. I think if they're stuck in, in, you know, apartments for three to five years or more, I think if you did a survey of them, many of them would say they would prefer to be in something more permanent.
Right, right.
Something that they want to build up equity. Thank you very much.
Merci beaucoup. Thank you, madame.
Thank you.
Merci conseiller Kingston. Merci David and Francesco. Merci beaucoup.
Our next item is social inclusion neighborhood profiles. And he's a Dell LeBlanc General Manager, Community Service will be leading this along with Vincent Morella and a consultant Liam Fisher, data analyst and research coordinator for Human Development Council.
Bonjour Vincent.
Good afternoon Vincent.
Present the neighborhood profile report. And as mentioned, we do have Liam Fisher and Randy Hatfield here with the Human Development Council. This report was a foundational action item within the social inclusion plan as other items rely on this information for us to be able to move forward on them. The plan also recommends sharing the neighborhood profiles with community, community to supply nonprofits and service providers with this information for them to better target the, the, their efforts in the neighborhoods needing the most support. Before we get started, I just want to make a quick plug for how engaged and results oriented our social inclusion committee is. And I just want to give a shout out to councillors Richard and Bourgeois for being excellent on the committee with us. We did just finish our budget process and we'll be reporting back to you on that shortly on those developments in the coming months. So with that, I'm going to call up here Liam and/or Randy to present the neighborhood profiles for him.
All right, thank you, everyone. I'm going to present some of the findings from this neighborhood profiles report that we did with the social inclusion committee late 2024 and early 2025. So I'm Liam Fisher. I'm the data analyst and research coordinator at the Human Development Council. And it was a team effort, but I was the primary lead for this, this project in particular. So this is the agenda and the agenda is, the agenda of the presentation is just going to loosely follow the structure of the report and how it was outlined and how we came to our findings. So context, what the priority neighborhoods were, our community workshop, the data, some neighborhood profiles, and then finally a dashboard. So some context, the purpose of this report was to help target the social, was to help the social inclusion committee target specific communities of the greatest need. So the idea is, the philosophy behind the report is the social inclusion committee had a specific set of action items. These action items were focused on vulnerable populations, community supports, targeting people with low income. And because there's limited resources, ideally these resources are targeted to neighborhoods of the greatest need. And that's where our report came in. So previously, with a report done by Help Seeker, the social inclusion committee identified a specific set of action items. And a subset of these action items pertain to targeting priority neighborhoods or neighborhoods of the greatest need. So if you ever reference that previous Help Seeker report, those action items are 4.01A all the way down to that last one, 13.01A. And that there is the cover page of the report. That report has been made public. It's available on our website for reference, shhtc.ca, under Research and Reports. That, that report can be found and read through. So the priority neighborhoods. The priority neighborhoods, we base them on what are called dissemination areas. Dissemination areas are the smallest geography that Statistics Canada publicly releases census data for. They're, they're small and they're neighborhood level and they allow us to take a granular look at, at, at economic metrics within communities. So we outlined that the priority neighborhoods based on dissemination areas. We used both publicly available data, data from government agencies. We use community consultation and feedback from the social inclusion committee. And all of those sources brought together helped us to finally identify the boundaries of the priority neighborhoods. So an important note, when looking at the, the specific boundaries that we outlined on the map is that they're not, they're not fixed and they're not exact. So the boundaries follow dissemination areas because that allows us to take the data from the census and analyze where the greatest needs are. But the communities themselves have a good understanding of exactly which areas within these neighborhoods require the greatest need. So this is, this is the final map that we came up with integrating all those data sources. And the result is nine priority neighborhoods, one through nine here. So this is a satellite view of Moncton with the boundaries of the neighborhoods outlined there on the map. So how did we arrive at these, how did we arrive at these final boundaries? So the first step was a community workshop conducted by the social inclusion committee. And we went into this community workshop for part of it to do a satellite mapping exercise. So there was service providers from across the city of Moncton all came together to do this, to do this mapping exercise. So what we did was we broke the participants off into tables of roughly three to seven people. And they each had a giant printout of a satellite map of Moncton. And what they did was using their ground level knowledge outlined in Sharpie, where they believed the greatest interventions were needed. And so what we did was we took all of those maps and digitized them, converted them into like a computer representation of what the participants had outlined. And then these are those results. So how this map works is areas that show up in darker blue mean that more of the key informants at the workshop agreed that that was an area that had high need. So you can see some of the areas that show up with darker blue, some of the areas in downtown, certain areas slightly more north, and these correlate. This was our foundation. This was our foundation for identifying where the priority neighborhoods were. And then building off of this, we, we asked the key informants as well, what sorts of things are important when identifying priority neighborhoods? And you can see some of the things they identified here. Income, locations of community centers, availability of public transportation, family composition, things like one parent families, education levels, food security and so on. So using these two things as our foundation, we moved into, we moved into collecting the quantitative data. So we had the qualitative data already established and we wanted to reinforce and affirm that with the quantitative data. So our data sources were numerous. We used the census as the foundation. We also had some social assistance data from social development. We used voter turnout data from elections and B, T1 family file, which is data from people's tax returns as well as locations of services from 211. So this is an example of how a map would look. In black there is the boundaries of the priority neighborhoods as they were identified. And then underneath that are the boundaries of the dissemination areas. And the color coding, it correlates to the intensity of whatever piece of information we're looking at. So in this case, it's population density per kilometer squared. So an area that's shaded in darker blue would have a larger population density. So unsurprisingly there, a lot of our priority neighborhoods correlate with areas of higher population density. So this is a map showing median after-tax household income. So dissemination areas in, in darker blue have higher median after-tax household income. And you can see that dissemination areas with low household income correlate with our priority neighborhoods. And so a similar trend can be seen for the prevalence of low income in communities. Neighborhoods with high prevalence of low income tend to be found in our priority neighborhoods. And what was a really interesting and validating finding throughout this exercise was just how much the data available from the census as well as from government agencies matched what the prior, what the key informants, the people who work in communities had identified during that workshop, during, during that mapping workshop. So we looked at lots of metrics. There's a whole bunch of maps in the report. We've just selected a subset here to highlight core housing need is also an important metric. And you can see the correlation between our priority neighborhoods and, and prevalence of core housing need. We also have prevalence of renters. Our priority neighborhoods correlate with neighborhoods that have a high concentration of renters as opposed to homeowners. Renters tend to face additional challenges as it relates to income. Prevalence of one parent families, our key informants pointed this out as an important metric. And our priority neighborhoods tend to have higher rates of one parent families. Prevalence of people on social assistance, this was a data set that was acquired from social development for the use of this project. And we can see that again, our priority neighborhoods tend to contain the highest prevalence of social assistance rates, the highest prevalence of people who are receiving social assistance across the province. Oh, sorry, across Moncton. Another important component in this report is the priority neighborhood profiles. So what this is, is, is a data table detailing demographic information for each of the priority neighborhoods. And the takeaway from this is that even though there's nine priority neighborhoods and they exhibit similar metrics, they're not all the same. And they might not all require the same intervention. So when we take a look at low income, for example, even though every priority neighborhood has a significantly higher rate of low income than Moncton overall, when we break that down, when we break that down by age, not all, not every priority neighborhood has the same demographic experiencing a higher prevalence of low income. So certain neighborhoods, for example, tend to be, tend to have a high concentration of seniors in low income, particularly if you look at that graph and you see neighborhood one has a 10.1% rate for percent of the population that are in low income age 65 plus, as opposed to neighborhood nine, which is only 1.1%. But neighborhood nine has a 19.1% prevalence of people that are in low income zero to 17, whereas neighborhood one is only 4.6%. So certain action items say we want to target children in low income or our schools that experience higher prevalence of children in low income. And this sort of data helps us to, helps us to target the resources the most effectively. So this is the French translation of that table. So another component of the, of the project was to take all the data that is contained in this report and, and turn it into a dashboard. So in our work with the social inclusion committee, we have a interactive dashboard that takes and visualizes all of this data in the report. And what this allows us to do is really dig into what streets are in the neighborhoods and what the, what, what constitutes them. So one of the things, one of the action items in the report was to do some, to do some community engagement in places like public parks. So what this dashboard allows you to do is to say, okay, these are our priority neighborhoods. These are our metrics and we could toggle on, I want to see where the parks are. And then you could say, okay, I see, these are the public parks that overlap priority neighborhoods one, two and three. And then you could select, okay, I need to pick the, I have these options for a community engagement event in these public parks. I want to make sure that it's accessible via public transit. So then you could turn on the layer that shows you the bus routes and then make sure that you're, you're picking the best location. So yeah, so this project overall had a pretty clear objective. It was, social inclusion committee had a specific set of targeted action items and where is the best place to, to implement these things? So that's the objective of the report. Those are our findings. And does anybody have questions?
Thank you so much. Are there any questions? Conseiller Richard.
Si, madame. Thank you Liam. It was a great, great project. Fine tuning it with the committee coming a few times, either virtual or in person. So it was, we really appreciate your help. The dashboard, the last slide that you were showing, can you explain where that's available, how that's available, is it only, if, if public is looking for it or?
Yeah, so the report itself has been made publicly available. The dashboard is specifically for use by the social inclusion committee. So the social inclusion committee has the link and access to that dashboard and they're the contact for.
I just wanted.
Working with that.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify it for the public.
Yeah, for sure.
Watching, if you're asking, so.
Yeah.
But again, and also thank you to Vincent for, for being behind us the whole way. Merci conseiller Bourgeois and toute l'équipe de social inclusion.
Merci, merci madame. Conseiller Legere. Merci madame la maresse. Merci pour la présentation. Pourquoi est-ce qu'on limite le tableau de bord au comité de l'inclusion sociale? Est-ce que c'est juste ce qui a été proposé? Ou pourquoi est-ce que on parle tellement de données ouvertes? Pourquoi est-ce que il n'est pas disponible à tous? Oui, à travers tout le projet, on voulait reconnaître les préoccupations associées au quartier prioritaires et la stigmatisation que ça peut causer. Et alors on a discuté avec le comité, on a décidé que le rapport serait public mais le tableau de bord appartient chez le comité de l'inclusion sociale et je sais pas ce que on réserve à l'avenir. Qui veut dire que si vous ne savez pas, si vous ne savez pas où on a besoin d'amélioration ou on ne sait pas comment les communiquer, enfin bref, c'est juste un commentaire. On apprécie.
Concentrated perhaps?
Que on veut que certaines choses demeurent concentrées, mais dans le plus grand portrait, on entend dire que différentes zones de la ville sont moins bonnes. Mais si on avait des données, on pourrait dire donc alors voici ce qu'on va faire pour améliorer la situation. Peut-être que c'est une conversation que devrait avoir le comité de l'inclusion sociale. Et sur le plan géographique, ceci est très bien, mais est-ce que?
Identified the wards.
J'ai apprécié le rapport de, il y a quelques années où vous avez identifié les quartiers et vous avez donné une idée d'où étaient les niveaux de pauvreté. Nous avons quatre quartiers. Et et on en parle lors des élections. Mais on, la composition demeure la même, et j'aimerais revoir cela. Parce que quand on veut ou on veut pas, on a de la pauvreté à travers la ville, mais on a, il y avait de grandes surprises à ce moment-là. À ce moment-là, est-ce qu'on pourrait, on peut-être qu'on pourrait avoir des stratégies pour chaque quartier à ce moment-là? Et là, ça devient plus délibéré. On connaît les les problèmes sociaux au centre-ville, dans les quartiers un et deux surtout, mais il y a des choses ailleurs aussi. Je me demandais si cela pourrait être disponible.
It kind of showed where?
Oui, c'était. Mais il y avait des semblables, des choses, des ressemblances entre les différents quartiers. Les gens ne reconnaissaient pas, les gens pensent toujours que c'est toujours dire ailleurs, mais non. Oui, on n'a pas adopté cette approche pour ce rapport, bien que ça avait été très utile à Saint-Jean parce que le comité de l'inclusion sociale avait identifié une série clé de points d'action. Mais on voulait s'assurer de bien cibler les bons voisinsages, les bons quartiers de voisinsage. Alors, c'est pour votre travail ici en tant que conseiller de quartier municipal, oui, ceci est très utile pour comprendre les différences. Oui, peut-être que, c'est peut-être une conversation qu'on devrait avoir nous au conseil, justement, pour voir si on peut avoir ce genre de rapport, parce que c'est très utile, et ça n'enlève rien. Ça n'enlève rien de, de certaines, certains voisinsages concrets qu'il faudrait cibler particulièrement, mais je pense qu'on aurait une meilleure compréhension globale. Alors, j'aimerais voir le rapport, et peut-être que c'est quelque chose qu'on pourrait discuter, Madame Lammeresse, et participer davantage. Je sais que nous avons un comité de l'inclusion sociale, mais en tant que conseiller, on devrait nous aussi, on devrait savoir comment est ce tableau de bord et ce qui se passe alors. Je pense qu'il faut qu'on en parle davantage. Merci Madame Lammeresse, merci encore. C'est très bien. Et c'est utile de voir les données superposées maintenant, et c'est question de ce qu'on fait avec et comment on avance. Merci conseiller Richard, Isabelle.
I just wanted to maybe reiterate, the dashboard itself is, as mentioned, is to be served as a, used as a tool for the Social Inclusion Committee. I think you brought a bit more clarification, councillor, as to what your intention was in sharing it publicly. Perhaps it was for use of council more so than public. I think we want to be sensitive to the information that we have out there. I'm sure if the Social Inclusion Committee wanted to share some information with some of the local organizations that are working, they want to know where to engage, as Liam mentioned, what park is the best venue, then that could probably be done. But this is really meant to be used, I think, as a tool, but certainly the Social Inclusion Committee can have some conversations. We have two councillors who are here, Vincent is here as well, and to see what they might want to do with it.
Merci conseiller bourgeois.
Merci Madame Lammer, thank you Liam. And Vincent as well. Well, what I was going to say was very similar to, if you refer to page four, it says social inclusion action items. There are, I don't know, maybe sixty, seventy action items in the social inclusion plan. A common theme of about ten of them, as you see on page four, is the neighborhood profile. So we had to figure out if we wanted to do these things where the most vulnerable or less served areas of this city. So here's what we are going to do based on the neighborhood profiles. I just want to add one comment, we might do more, but at least this is what we're, what's in the social inclusion plan that council has mandated the committee to implement. I just want to reiterate the point that you made earlier. Some of these maps, some of these chunks are huge. And because the Statistics Canada dissemination areas have a bigger one, other places are really small, so more targeted. But within the bigger maps, for instance, all of downtown is one of the regions because there were tiny pockets within downtown where some of the vulnerable population is. So we'll, we might have to fine-tune it when we dig deeper into exactly what services, whether it's internet plans, or food banks, or older adults who are more vulnerable and who would need more assistance. So we'll have to dig that. But if there's, my final comment is, there's one thing we didn't want to produce out of this was the perception that these neighborhoods are, are, I can't use any words that come to mind, but vraiment vulnérables et favorisés. So, so paint these areas as being, that's not the case. It was just to identify if there are geographical pockets that need more of a hand up than others. Merci Madame Lammer.
Merci conseiller bourgeois. I don't see any other questions. We are going to take a health break for five minutes. So before we go to the next item. We'll resume the meeting.
The next item is an update on agency board, on agency boards, commissions, and committees policy. And you have the CRF in front of you. If there are any questions? Other questions?
But there is a motion, there is a motion.
There is a motion before council.
So I need a mover and a second, there, conseiller Kingston. Conseillère Leblanc, d'appuyer.
Counselor Leblanc. You move the motion. We're good. Counselor Bourgeois, you have a question? I have about fifteen questions. I'm trying to see how best to address them. If the council agrees, maybe I could share the concerns by email, and then we could bring back the issue for approval. I think it's, it's a shame because we've had the chance to, the opportunity to discuss them, but we are trying to review the policy. We have three key decisions to make each year, one on the budget, the other one on evaluating the manager. And the third one is when we adopt policies. So I have about a dozen or fifteen questions, so maybe they will result in three or four proposals of changes. This could be a bit time-consuming, so if the council agreed, and anybody else would be allowed to ask questions, maybe we should circulate those questions. Because here we are in front of a document that we are given on the Friday morning, and we have to make a decision on the Monday. Maybe we could do that, or I can ask my fifteen questions. What's the will of the committee, of the board?
The chair, the staff leads.
It's about training for chairs and staff leads?
So that, we'd have to cancel that, which we can. It's just that this has been lingering for a while and we wanted to get it done. I'm okay with postponing that training by a couple of weeks if, if that's the will of council that they want to review all of councillor Bourgeois's questions. Nick, are you okay with me postponing?
Yes, I think that's fine, and it gives the opportunity for any other, any other elected officials, if they have any other questions, to circulate them in writing also. And we can send out a reminder by email, and we could provide a date by which we'd like to have written questions by, and we can provide a, provide a more fulsome answer before the next meeting.
Therefore, we'll need a motion to postpone this item to the September committee of the hall.
Donc conseiller bourgeois, vous avez proposé la motion de remède au mois de septembre.
C'est ça, the committee of the hall.
So the motion is to postpone the issue to the September session of the committee of the hall.
The postponement, it's a non-debatable.
Merci.
Conseiller bourgeois.
Thank you. Counselor Bourgeois, could you please record your vote?
Could you close the vote, please? Unanimous.
Unanimous. Merci à tous. Motion passed.
Well, thank you, everyone. Counselor Richard, we are going to conclude the meeting. Thank you. Thank you.